Call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Pledge allegiance, Drew, would you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Please stand, your right hand over your heart, right, there you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a report out of closed session. In a closed session vote, closed session by a vote of five to zero, the board took action to appoint Dr. Julie Hatchell as an elementary principal effective April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. That's our report now. We need adoption of the agenda. Jan and Jim, do I ask you for corrections first? Are there corrections to the agenda?
No, no changes.
Okay. So, a vote on the agenda as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five to zero. We have no recognitions this evening. We have public comment on non-agenda items. We have blue cards or green cards in the back. Please note you have three minutes to speak and the board cannot discuss the items because they are not part of the agenda. Sheri Morgan.
I knew that you would start promptly, so I hustled right over. First of all, I'd like to comment that it's been now twelve months since we've had live video recordings. As a public member of this community, I find that completely unacceptable that it's taken you twelve months to find a way to put in the live feed once again. I find that it makes it impossible to serve the community of which you've been elected by, to make it easier for them to follow along, not see it the next day. I know that it's very inconvenient to not to sit here throughout the evening when it's easier to kind of watch and follow along and then come in. I know there's been multiple occasions where I've followed along and then when you get closer to the agenda item, I'll come in and speak on what I'd like to speak on and then go home. One of the disadvantages for you, when I have to sit here all night, I usually have something to say about a lot. So, the sooner you get the video back in, probably the less likely you'll see me. Now, on the other part of what I wanted to say on this piece here is that I was at Thurston today for the forensics crime scene that Mrs. Martinez put on, and it was fantastic. It was the perfect example of project-based learning that can be done any time of the year before break, after break. It was attended by and led by Doctor, or by Mr., by Corn, sorry, I'm getting all my doctors and people mixed up, but it was led by Corn. They did a fantastic job. They are such an asset to our district. It's probably one of the better things that you guys have done in the last couple of years. And what was fantastic is that he brought, what, ten, fifteen people from the department, and they had all of the leads of their department. The captains came and observed the program and stayed for a good portion of it. It was very disappointing to see that there was not any of our administration there to celebrate such a fantastic project that is part of what this whole new learning going forward is supposed to be about, and celebrating what we are doing well and what our teachers are doing well. Because that's where the real work is being done, not collecting data. These are students, they're not data. And it's become very clear that this district is being led by data. And what you're missing when you lead by data is the human connection. And it doesn't matter how many circles you have outside your buildings saying that you're so great, if you're not lead, if you're not keeping that human connection, you kind of suck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment on non-agenda items? No one else? Now we'll go to reports. We have our student board representatives, Drew and Kalohay.
Good afternoon, everyone. So jumping right in, at the elementary schools, we had the talent show, which is really fun to kind of see our community rally around the talent show because it's just a really fun time to kind of celebrate all the students. Then at El Moro, we had the Great Kindness Challenge, and that was from January twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, and that was put on entirely by the kids of ASB at an elementary school, which is awesome to see kind of young involvement in leadership. We have a Jog-a-thon assembly tomorrow to kind of kick off the Jog-a-thon event. It was really exciting, I mean, I remember doing it, it's a lot of fun to kind of do. At Thurston, as Ms. Morgan said, they had the forensics event, which went very well. I was able to talk to a couple of kids that participated in it, and they really enjoyed it, and it's kind of exciting to see how it kind of grows each year. We're having more TMS talks about just kind of different careers and a lot of other things. The eighth graders were able to attend the Museum of Tolerance up in LA, which is kind of a museum about the Holocaust, and they've read Diary of Anne Frank before attending, so they're able to kind of learn a bit more in depth about kind of the persecution of a lot of people during kind of the World War II era. Then at the high school, we had Winter Formal, which was extremely successful. The theme was Winter Wonderland in the Office. The pep assembly where kind of our entire school gets together and kind of celebrates one another. It, a lot of staff and students said that it was one of the best. Our ASB is kind of trying to, with the pep assemblies, kind of cut down on the time in between events, and that's where we kind of lose a lot of student interaction and a lot of spirit and a lot of energy. So we kind of try to keep the energy kind of going throughout the entire pep assembly, which I think we've done pretty successfully. Then we had the senior breakfast. I wanted to personally thank all the senior moms who were able to pull off such an amazing event. There was a little difficulty planning the event, but I think overall, kind of the seniors in ASB and a lot of the ASB moms were kind of, were able to pull out a really fun event for a lot of the seniors, and it was more attended than our homecoming senior breakfast. So I'm excited to see how many people come to our prom senior breakfast. Then we had our, we had our, the event itself at Soke University, which was absolutely beautiful. Like, I was looking at pictures before, but it was even more beautiful in person. I think a lot of the students enjoyed it more than a couple of the other venues we had. It was just overall a really nice event for our school, and I hope we use it in the future. For Winter Formal, King, Queen, Isabel Peterson won Queen, and I won King. Thank you. Yeah, it was a, it was a fun experience. Then, kind of moving on from Winter Formal, we've been having a lot of club engagement this year. We've kind of been growing a lot of our clubs, which is awesome to see. There's, it's not, there's a lot of other schools that kind of have a lot more like, like, front-running clubs, but we have a lot, we just have a lot of clubs that a lot of like smaller kind of populations of our students kind of fit themselves into. We have the band club performing at lunch a couple times this year, which is really fun to kind of see like live band, like live music during lunch. And we had the K-pop club, Korean pop, perform during the pep assembly, which was, I don't, I don't even remember when we had a club participate in the pep assembly. So it's really good to kind of have that much involvement with students in kind of different areas around school. The Model United Nations went to Boston for a conference, and they're always fun every single year. I mean, I'm friends with a lot of kids who are in MUN, and it's one of their highlights of the year and probably of high school. And Boston's such a fun place to go to, and everyone had a really good time and learned a lot from a lot of other students around our nation. We have a lot of sports going into CIF, and I just wanted to wish the best of luck to all the sports. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Drew. I think you have to go for a theater practice, so thank you. Corporal Ashton, Officer Yielding, are you guys reporting?
Good evening, everyone. So, it's been, what, how long now since I started?
About a month.
About a month, about a month. Needless to say, I've got a list here of things that I've already done, but it's, it's been a really, really good first, first month. Integrating with the schools, getting to learn the kids, it's been really an awesome experience for me. So, just go over a couple of the things that we've done thus far. On the sixth of January, as you guys already know, we both presented campus, campus safety for the district staff. During that presentation, we went over a couple of bullet points, but one of them was situational awareness, you know, being aware of your surroundings and reporting suspicious behavior and addressing it, the run, hide, fight model that we teach, and then, you know, kind of what to expect when law enforcement arrives. So, it was a long presentation. We had two sessions, two two-hour sessions with, with a lot of the district staff. It was, it was well received by them. We debriefed afterwards and talked to them and had a conversation about, you know, what we can be doing better and any concerns that they had. So, that was on the sixth. You want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just a, a lot of questions that come up with our, our staff, as well as parents, we get on a regular basis, is what, is what happens after the incident? Like, when will we see your, see our kids again? So we took the time to cover that process, because it is a process, it is a crime scene. And when you, we hear campus safety, you don't think about just an active shooter, it could be anything, it could be armed, a person armed with a knife, it could be even a lockdown situation. So, it could be any of those variations, but we want to make sure that our staff members are fully prepared for it. We want to even enhance that training, just to get maybe some practical at some point. I know that discussion is happening, and we're going to be hitting to that at some point. We have a list, so we'll make it as quick as possible.
Yeah, I'm just trying to go down the list and just trying, there's a lot of things we've been doing, but I just want to try and hit on a lot of the points that we came up with. The large part of my position was actually getting in the classrooms, which I've been able to do a couple of times. On the eighth of January, I went into Ms. Silver's class and talked to the kids about, oh, I'm sorry, Thurston Middle School, talked to the kids about tolerance and resiliency. This was before the, the trip up to the Museum of Tolerance. I was able to get in her classroom, went up to Top of the World and started reading the books to kids during their, during their library time. I, actually, I, it was brought up to me at another PTA meeting at the high school, one of the PT, one of the parents, I guess their kid was jazzed about it when he got home that day and was, was talking to her about it. So, it's good for me to hear that, that, you know, getting in the classroom and doing those types of things is actually reverberating with the kids. And then, on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, Corporal Ashton presented to five of Ms. Forster's health classes at the high school.
Fosters.
Fosters, sorry, at the high school on mental health awareness, which is something that's obviously big, big nowadays. And I'll let you touch upon that.
Yeah, and as you know, we, we do that routinely, so it was with the, our student support specialist, Ms. Aronson, and I co-teach with her, but it's been a very beneficial presentation. We were able to help a lot of her kids, give them the empowerment to speak up when they have concerns or issues that they're going through. So it's been highly recognized, to me, it's one of the best presentations that we do because we really see the effects of it and the positives that come out of it. January twenty-ninth, Officer Yielding and I presented active shooter training to Festival of Arts pageant of the master staff. The reason why I do that in there is because I know that our students have jobs there and they work there during the summertime. And so to me, that's a, it's, it's invaluable that we train their staff on that protocol, on how to react, to better safeguard our kids. So we did that on the twenty-ninth. February second, February the second, I worked the Winter Formal dance, and that's always fun for me because I get to interact and just dance with the kids and, you know, watch after them, and, you know, it's always positive. And so, just building those trusting relationships.
Shows good dancing moves.
Yeah, I don't know, you got better dancing moves once you get to that point and get on the list here. All right, so, and then, I let, to fourth, go ahead.
Let's see here. Yeah, on the, on the fourth of this month, I know, he already touched upon it, but we were both able to attend the Museum of Tolerance tour. Actually got to ride the bus up with the kids, interact with them on the way up there. It was a lot of fun, good reflection, even on my part. There's a lot of things that, I actually had never been to the museum. It's a really, it's a, it's amazing what they, what they've done with that place. But it's good for me to reflect and then to see the students kind of take in, you know, the, the surroundings and how, just reading the book and kind of understand, you know, where we're coming from and, you know, just build it all into their lives moving forward. So that was a lot of fun. You know, had some fun on the way back with the kiddos, too. And he, he did it the, the next day.
Yeah, so he took, he did it first day, and then I did the second day with the head creators at Thurston.
Let's see here. On the, again, on the, on, this is a lot, I'm sorry, we've, we've done a lot the last couple of months. On the fifth of the, of February this month, Top of the World had a lockdown drill with all their teachers and with this, with the kids. I, I walked around the whole campus, kind of did an overview from my standpoint. Then we debriefed with the principal and with some of the staff members on, you know, new plans for future drills and what can we improve on, what I thought was good. But we, we developed a new plan moving forward with some things that we can tweak and make a little bit better. So that was good. I also presented at the Laguna Beach Board of Realtors meeting. They had me come and just do a quick little intro about myself and, and the second spot. And they had a lot of questions about school safety, too. I answered a lot of questions for that. Let's see. I met with Ryan Zeta at, at El Moro School, and we just discussed ways to improve the fencing at the gates there. This is just ongoing things for us, you know, we're constantly reevaluating and, and looking at these schools from different standpoints and constantly trying to do things to better it. Let's see. I attended the El Moro Talent Show, which he already brought up as well, and I actually performed with the school staff.
Did a good job.
Well, I was going to say, I apologize if anyone had to be exposed to that.
I'll bring the video next, we're going to have to watch it.
It was, we posted it on our Instagram page.
Cowboy hat and everything.
It, it was a lot of fun, and I really wanted to be there, support the kids, because it takes a lot of courage for them to get up in front of their entire school and, and do the things they did. So I really wanted to be there to encourage them and, you know, going through that. I thought that was awesome. And then, just a couple weeks ago, I started presenting smartphone safety to the kids at El Moro, and I'm going to try and do that with, with Top of the World, too, mainly to like grades three through five. And, you know, just some of the things that I touched upon in the presentation is, you know, the, the effects of bullying and, and our words and how we use them, and how they can be misinterpreted in like a text and that kind of thing, how we can send in anger and then, you know, immediately regret sending it, but guess what, it's already sent, you can't take it back. Inclusion, protecting your passwords, you know, don't give your passwords out to your friends, you know, accepting friend requests from strangers that you don't know, so diving into like the online predator thing. And then, taking a break from it was kind of a huge point for me because the average kid spends about four hours a day on their phone, so that was important. And then I'll let Corporal Ashton talk about the School Power Dance.
So I had the opportunity to, to attend the School Power Dinner Dance, and I thought it was amazing. It was life-changing for me because every step, and this is with no exaggeration, exaggeration whatsoever, every step I took, parents were coming up to me and my wife and just thanking me for the job and, obviously, what we've done for our schools, and how big of an impact that we've left on their kids. And I thought that was special, being there and seeing that, and just seeing the, getting the feedback firsthand from the parents. It was all night. And seeing how much investment the families here put into our children. I don't know where you see that in, in any other places, but we have a special community here, and so I'm proud to be a part of it, and so is Officer Yielding. And, as you know, you heard, we, today we had a mock crime scene at Thurston Middle School. It was a lot of fun. Saw the smile on our kid, the kids' faces, it, it was amazing. And to be able to work alongside real detectives and police officers, and we worked the crime scene like we would work a regular, a real homicide. And so, for them to just be empowered and to utilize the things that they took on in the classroom setting and applying it in a real-life situation, it couldn't get any better. I mean, from photography to obtaining DNA and shoe impressions, we really emphasized throughout the entire scene the importance of communication, teamwork, and documentation. But all in all, the kids were very excited, and I know that it's going to be a memory they'll never forget. I'm working with a senior at Laguna Beach High School who is very passionate about underage drinking. And so, we are planning on something that I think you're going to be very excited about. I want the student to talk about it when she, when the time comes, but just stay tuned for that.
Be in hush, hush.
And then, and then we're also looking at another student spotlight coming very soon, okay? Sorry to take up so much time, but this doesn't also include all of the one-on-one time that we spend with the kids. There's a lot of interaction that goes on daily, and so these are just the extras that we do. So, thank you very much.
I think Holden, Board Member Kelly has a quick question.
Yes, sir. Do you have a website where it tells where you're at every day?
I wish.
No, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, so, so our dispatchers keep track of where we're at. So, we put out our locations throughout our shifts. That's something that we can now stat where we're at, so you'll be able to see how much time we're spending at.
Because you seem to be so scheduled. It would seem like I would be able to find you if I wanted to do something bad, I'd know you're over here and you're over here, so.
Our days are constantly stagnated. We're, we're never at a certain location at the same time. You'd be surprised on how many, we're, there's not a, a day that goes by that we're not sitting down saying, what are we going to do today? It's, it's continuous, there's things constantly going on. The things that are scheduled, like I said, I would say this is probably a tenth of our day. This is things that we sometimes have to, we have to make things happen just to make this date, to attend these certain events, because there's constantly things going on. Having a second SRO has been great, but the, but the demand has been a lot more, and so we're both busy, equally busy. But it's been a good thing because...
I think it's great for the engagement with the kids.
Right.
I'm just always concerned about the surprise issue of being seen at the other facilities four times a day.
We're constantly changing our schedule, so we're never at the same place at the same time over and over.
Yeah, that's one thing that I really emphasize, is we never want to be in a, on a schedule, like at one campus at this time, another campus at the other time. That will throw off anyone who wanted to come on the campus, not knowing what our, our schedules are, that keeps people confused. And, and be honest with you, we can't be at a campus at this time every day because there's always, the demands, there's always something going on, so. And that's a good thing because it keeps people on their, on their toes. And we also, some days we don't drive police cars, we drive detective cars. So sometimes people, we're there and they don't even know we're there, so.
And that's not something that's public knowledge, where we're at, I mean, when we tell our dispatch, that's something that only we know. It's not like somebody can go off and look, okay, well, Fred's over at El Moro at this time. It's not like that.
Yeah.
And like, you know, Corn was saying, we're just, we're all over the place all the time, so there's no set schedule.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Sorry for the long-winded, uh...
Thank you.
But...
Thanks, we appreciate all the information, that's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, our next report is with our bargaining unit representatives. Labufa, Marian?
Labufa would like to acknowledge that we're sunshining tonight, and we're looking forward to starting the IBB process with the district. We would also like to thank the district for the behavioral training that is ongoing right now for our teachers and staff. A lot of people are taking advantage of it and finding it useful. Another PD that was really well-received, we'd like to thank Mike Morrison and the district for the ed tech protocols. Several teachers from all levels and subjects were able to participate in it and are finding it highly valuable and useful in their classrooms. They were able to go right back and implement lessons the very next day, which really speaks to having something meaningful when you can take a piece away like that. So we're hoping that that will be offered again, so more staff will be able to partake in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Water for CSCA.
Yes, good evening. We are also sunshining this evening. This is a reopener of a three-year contract, so we only have two articles from our side and two articles from administration, and then standing two articles that are usually open. And most of it is around language. So, we look forward to our IBB and to a very positive interaction as we start on the twenty-fourth, which is the Monday we get back. So, we're well-prepared for that. My team met on Wednesday afternoon. Behavioral training, yes, Sabrina Shook, did I get it right there, is excellent. I am also attending the behavioral training myself. There's roughly seven classified IAs in the training also, which is really fantastic, and I appreciate the opportunity for them to be a part of this and myself also. On March thirteenth, we have another non-student professional day, and I'd like to thank Mr. Conlon for working very diligently on putting together, again, presentations for the classified staff that will really benefit a lot of our classified staff, and then break down into individual groups so that they can have their own meetings with their specialty groups as needed. And then re-class meetings have started also. So, we're off to, it seems like the school year's getting almost over, but we're well into it and going, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next one is our board member report. Board Member Vickers.
Thank you. I tend to PTA council, and they are getting ready to do the Jog-a-thons, and the people that are in charge of them at the two schools are making some changes, which I think was really interesting because it's been probably the same for a lot of years. And they're doing an obstacle course at Top of the World type of thing, and then they're using a, like a bib check-in at El Moro, so they don't have to count and mark the laps. So they're trying those things out, and they're very enthusiastic about that. A couple of the groups are just trying to find officers to be president in the next year, so they're struggling a little bit with that. But, all in all, they're, they always come, they're very enthusiastic to share what they're doing at their school sites with the other PTA presidents, and that's about all for that. I just, hearing the reports, I would just comment, I, it brings to mind that you think of Laura Silver and Museum of Tolerance and Michelle Martinez and starting that project, it's been a number of years, and so they're, they're dedicating extra time, and I know we have other teachers that aren't on the top of my head right now, that really, I think, give our students exceptional opportunities in this district because they go above and beyond and provide these unique experiences. And now it sounds like they've really expanded this by using the actual police officers in that presentation. And then, thinking of them themselves, the SRO program, and hearing their report, just really tells us how much value we're getting from that and how much that also will enrich our student experiences and also for their social-emotional well-being. But that, so I would like to circle back and say, I know that Dr. Valoria worked a long time with the city, and Corporal Ashton was also passionate about it, to finally get this to happen. It didn't, it didn't happen overnight, and so I just wanted to recognize that because now we're really reaping the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Kelly, do you have a report?
City oversight hasn't met since the last time there was a guest leak, but we're trending online. The superintendent brought me back some nice information as far as from the meetings that he attended to in Sacramento, and it looks like there's some new things coming our way, and there's some challenging things coming our way. I also wanted to report that True Think, our wonderful student representative, achieved Eagle Scout, which only about four percent of scouts achieve that award. It started in nineteen-eleven, there's 2.5 million Eagle Scouts throughout the United States and the world, and I think it's just a real wonderful achievement. So, he is here to be honored.
Is that everything, Jim?
Yeah.
Good, thanks. Board Member Perry.
I was able to go on a field trip with CCA. I'm new to that group, so I went to four different schools with Patty Gruma, and it meant a lot to see them in person, not just hear about them. And I think my, one of my favorites was the four-year engineering strand at Capo Valley, where students come up, can come up with an engineering design, they program it in, and then they have an expensive piece of equipment that analyzes if it will really work or not. So, they don't have to spend the money building it before they try it out, and then, of course, all the equipment to bend and so on. And the culinary class was fun, candy, they were making candy. I also was very impressed with the middle school class, their, their STEM class, which had eighteen different stations, covering an incredible amount of things. And the teacher there is actually really good friends with Paul Matheson, which was kind of fun. What I really was impressed with is some of those middle school students loved their section so much, they have written grants and gotten money for equipment as middle schoolers. So that was very impressive to me. I also, let's see, they also have a, a legal track, which is really interesting, where students who decide early on that they might want to become a lawyer, start in high school and have a two-year program, then they're kind of... and have a two-year program, then they're kind of fast-tracked into different universities. And then they, the whole thing, they're finished in two years earlier than you would be if you went to four-year college and then three years to medic, I mean, three years to law school. So they have a lot of interest in that. And that was interesting, something we might explore at some point. Our students have great opportunities, but they have to travel for quite a few of them. Although it looks like we will be getting more of a lab situation here next year, which is exciting.
Is that everything?
Yep.
Thank you. Board Member Normandin.
Community Coalition doesn't meet till next week, so I'll update you guys at the back. And, oh, in two weeks. And I did want to say the MEAN conference, I heard back from seniors that it was the best one they've attended because it wasn't too big and it wasn't too small. Of all the locations they've traveled to the last three years, that was the best one for them and that they all love the dance as well and the location of the dance. True, I heard something, that's it.
And then my report, I attended the School Power Dinner Dance, which was wonderful. The organization itself, I'm always impressed in how many parents are engaged and involved to support our students and staff. I attended a Rotary Club meeting in Laguna Beach a few weeks ago and they released the New Grapes for Grad logo. And that is done by an LCAD student. And that program through the Rotary supports Laguna Beach High School students with scholarships, so we're grateful for that. I also attended at UCI School of Education a Workforce Development Summit. And this was a collaboration about how education at high school, community college, and university can work together to work on the competencies for workforce development. It was very interesting. Santa Ana, other districts were there also representing and university. And then I just wanted to congratulate on the OC Visitors Bureau Large Bus and the program, which I thought was really great, which is part of the Strong Workforce Development Grant that's really benefiting our schools. So thank you for that. That's my report. I'm going over to you now, Dr. Valoria.
Well, Lisa and I are both currently attending AASA, which is National Superintendent's Symposium. We drove down there yesterday, drove back up today, and we'll drive back down there tonight. It runs through Saturday and it's quite an impressive opportunity to hear from people throughout the nation on a lot of the different topics that we all share. One of which, I attended a session on building capacity in our leaders at our school sites. And it was Nashville Public Schools, which serves 87,000 students. And just talking about how they work to support all their learners. It was really quite impressive. I also would like to point out, kudos to our staff, our teachers and classified staff as well, who support our students. We just received more recently our science results. And there was an article, I believe in the LA Times, about how poorly students did throughout the state. But our students outperformed by quite a bit. The percent proficient in California was 30%, in Orange County it was 40%, and in Laguna Beach it was 71%. So again, very impressive results and I think it's a testament to the science work that's going on in our classrooms all the way through, so. The Sopa meeting that we had, first of all, was yesterday. I appreciate, we actually hosted and we're continuing to work together and we'll be updating our plan and bringing that to the board for approval probably sometime in June. Again, I also attended the OC Visitors Association career presentation and it was a great opportunity for our students to hear directly from people in the field. And the bus was, was pretty cool, parked out front. I met with CHOC and Orange County Department of Education regarding some mental health work that they're doing and a potential to partner. So we're investing in that as an opportunity, as well as attending the Orange County Department of Ed and the Orange County Healthcare Agency joint meeting they had about the mental health funds. So there's a lot of ongoing dialogue in the county around that and I believe that will continue. The superintendents throughout Orange County are quite concerned about how some of the money has been spent over time and have expressed some of our concern and are engaging in really proactive dialogue with the county around this topic. We had the Traveling Cafe at El Moro, which is just a great time to sit with the staff and talk with them. And so appreciate all the work that goes into that. Victoria finding time and a great turnout. And I heard really good things there about the PD that Mary Ann was talking about, the ed protocols. It was, people were talking about that still, how grateful they were to have that, so. I was also at the School Power Fund dinner. I just want to thank Sarah Duran and her staff and the volunteers that make that happen. I think they had over 300-plus guests there and raised quite a bit of money on behalf of our students. Sorry, it's a long, there's been a lot going on. Met with Pam Estes recently. They were applying for state-funded preschool status and they'll know more in March. So we were just chatting with them about kind of what that will look like moving forward and always looking for continual ways to partner. And we've identified some potential ways to expand our partnership at the high school. So very appreciative of their work. And as Dr. Kelly mentioned, I attended the California Small School Districts Association meeting, received a lot of up-to-date information regarding legislation that's going on and the governor's budget. So we'll see, there's a lot. It's always, never ceases to amaze me how much change can happen up there at the state level, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Winston?
Thank you. I wanted to thank Kelly Shear and acknowledge her work on that OC Visitors Association presentation. And I thought our students were really engaged. So I wanted to thank the teachers and staff who also attended and brought all of their students to that event. They really heard different opportunities from different areas that you wouldn't necessarily think of in the tourism industry. There are connections to IT, to business, to law enforcement. And so our students got to learn about that and I think it just opened up opportunities for those who are interested. I also wanted to remind you about our Mark Brackett presentation. He'll be talking about his new book, Permission to Feel, and that is on March 12th, beginning at 5:30. He'll also meet with our leadership team, as well as some of our counseling staff, prior to his parent ed event in the evening. And then he'll meet with all staff the following morning, so that we're all hearing the same message and learning about the information in his book. And we also want to thank our partner, School Power and PTA, for supporting that event as well. On Monday night, I think that was Monday night, there, Irene White, I just wanted to thank Irene for her work in coordinating the No Small Matter documentary showing in conjunction that was hosted at Mission Hospital. I think we expected maybe 50 people, we had 70 people show up. And they were all very complimentary about the event. It's a documentary focused on the importance of early learning and early intervention and how we really need to invest in our youngest learners because they are our future. So I just wanted to thank Irene for that. And finally, we just look forward to beginning collaborative, interest-based negotiations with both of our bargaining units right after the midwinter break.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. I just want to echo how impressed I was at the School Power Dinner Dance and very appreciative of the funds raised on behalf of our students. It was a great event, as it always is, and I think we all had a good time, so that's it.
Thank you very much. We now have, sorry, I'm just gonna get up on my public hearing. Right now, we're opening the public hearing. This is a presentation of the Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association and Laguna Beach Unified School District's Joint Proposal for the 2020-2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement and Announcement of a Requisite Public Hearing. I will now open the public hearing for input and comments by members of the community. So Sheri, you have public hearing on this one, number seven? Is that right? No, okay. So if no one speaks on the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. And now open the second public hearing. And this is a presentation of the Classified School Employees Association, Chapter 131, and Laguna Beach Unified School District's Joint Proposal for a reopeners to the 2018-2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement and Announcement of a Requisite Public Hearing. The public hearing is open for any input and comments by members of the community. Would anyone like to speak to this public hearing? Okay, so no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay. Now we're down to number eight. Sorry, I've got to work my computer a little bit, just a minute. We're now under consent. Does any, okay, sorry. Ready? Okay. Does any member wish to pull an item? I have two I need to pull. And I need to pull A, which is a minutes of January 7th, because we were not all in attendance. And I need to pull N, as in Nancy. Anyone else have anything to pull from consent?
Yes.
Oh, so.
Yes. I would also like to pull M.
M as in Mary?
Yes.
And anyone else, Jim? I mean, Board Member Kelly? Board Member Normandin, I don't know? No, okay. So we have pulled A, N, and M. So right, what? M as in Mary, N as in Nancy, yes. I'll just keep saying that, sorry, they sound the same. So we will be approving on cons, oh, wait. Okay. Okay, any public comment on consent? And this would be B through L and O. Did you want to comment on those? Okay. No, they'll be individually done and then you can comment on those.
Oh, you're gonna, you're still gonna comment, you're still gonna look at them?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to comment now on A through, oh, excuse me, B through L and O?
No, if I could just comment on them individually, an extra three minutes for both, that would be fantastic. First of all, I'd like to apologize for using not a great word for our schools. We have fabulous schools, we have amazing staff, and I apologize for using the word suck, it's been a little bit of a frantic day. But I would like to reiterate, if you're driving a district purely on data, there are so many facets that you're missing. And when you start driving everything based on data, it makes somebody start to wonder, "What are you measuring?" And while data, and I'm a big data person, I mean, I've been standing here before you many times with a lot of data, but it's, it's not the full picture. And I know you all know that, so I don't understand why we're so data-driven. I did want to comment on the technology, item F, and the technology contracts and licenses. And again, just remind you that the live video for the board meetings is now a year from when you pulled it to be ADA compliant. So if you didn't have, if you pulled the live video to be ADA compliant because you didn't feel that you were, so what are we now? We, now we have nothing. And, you know, one of the things you talk about is being, making sure that all parents in the community have access to an open and communicative environment. That's not, that's not what this is. Additionally, moving board meetings to a Thursday night is a massive change. And I would think that should require a huge communication push with all of this technology that we have, and there's been very little. So when you talk about being open and for the community and for the kids, I think you really need to take a step back and look at the actions that you're doing or not doing and determine if you truly are allowing our district to be driven by communications and being for the community and for the people and for the kids primarily, or are we just pursuing data? Because there's nothing that's showing that we're in touch with what's going on from a human standpoint if you're not videoing, live-streaming our board meetings and you're not announcing that you've completely changed the whole day of when you're having board meetings after how many years? I mean, thank you.
Thank you. So I will need a motion to approve consent items B through L and O. So Jim and Jan. Student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board member vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. Okay, and now we'll go to our separate items. And we're gonna go to the minutes, which are A. And that was a special board meeting, January 7th, and only, Board Member Perry's not able to vote on this. Or Board Member Kelly, okay. Any public comment on consent item A? Okay, none? Okay, so Jan and Carol, all those in favor? Aye. Do I say 320 or 302? Three, okay. Oh, and I need you guys to abstain. Okay, they nodded yes to abstain. Thank you, sorry. Okay, and now we're going down to, excuse me, I'm on the computer. M as in Mary. No, I only pulled A. Did I need to pull B? Nobody pulled B. Hold on just a minute. Victoria, do we need to pull B because of? Okay. Okay, should I go do B right now? Okay, so sorry, we're gonna go to item B because Board Member Kelly, you were absent at that meeting. And you had to depart due to, okay, okay. Okay, so any public comment on consent item B? None, okay, thank you. A motion to approve item number B? Okay, so D and Jan, all those in favor? Aye, abstain. Okay. 302, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, that's okay. Okay, and now we're at M as in Mary. And this is the annual contract with Atkinson, Andelson, Loyah, Rudd, and Romo for legal services. Is there any public comment on this item M? Sheri?
Hi, thank you again for the time. I'm curious if you, President Wolf, if you can tell me what the status of the funding for the legal, the legal budget is so far? Because it's understood that this particular, that this particular attorney is on an annual 170, is that, it's 170 this time, but I've been asking for legal, the legal budget. And I appreciate Mr. Dixon's support in trying to help understand what kind of numbers it is that I'm trying to understand. It's very concerning that our legal budget overall for 2018-19 was listed in public record as $262,000, when in 2016-17 it was only $116,000. 2015 it was $154,000, 2014 it was $62,000, or, excuse me, $92,000. So tonight you're getting ready to, or at least what's on the consent, is a total of $220,000. So.
This contract is a three-year contract, if you know, it goes to 2023, I believe.
Well, I believe it says annual, not to exceed amount of 170. So that would be 170,000 every year, Madam President. And I'm wondering if you can tell me where you are right now as far as spending currently?
I would have to direct you to the administration to answer your questions for you.
So you're going to try and, are you gonna be approving $170,000 if you don't know how much they've spent so far this evening?
You're asking me personally?
No, I'm asking you as a board member that is responsible for the operating budget of public funds.
Correct.
If you are aware of how much money they've spent on legal fees thus far, before you approve another $230,000 per year, when just four years ago we were only spending $115,000. I'd also am curious to know what you as a board are doing, can do, should do, and will do to try and hold Dr. Valoria and his staff accountable to reduce our legal fees? Because during his tenure, they've now over-doubled. And in that timeframe also, you have approved almost a 25% raise from the time that he started. from the time that he started until next year. Last year, you approved... Earlier this year, you approved an 8% raise. Staff got a 3% cost of living raise. So can you tell me how much we have spent so far in our legal fees this year? Before you approve a $230,000 a year?
I think I will still direct you to the administration to get information on it.
Okay. But you're gonna approve $230,000 tonight? And you don't know the answer to that question?
I'm gonna direct you to the administration.
Well, the pressure... So... The concerns here should be perhaps maybe we shouldn't be so hard to fight.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up.
We have some interaction. You're not...
Thank you. Sherry, your time is up. Thank you. Any more public comment on letter M as in Mary? None? Uh, a motion to approve? Okay, so Jan and, uh, Carol? And is it discussion now?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion?
I know that we have a board policy that says we're supposed to evaluate the performance of the firm and the attorney that provides our legal services in areas such as efficiency, adequacy of advice, results obtained for the district, reasonable benef... Use of fees, and responsiveness to and interaction with the board, administration, and community. We have not... Or unless I wasn't invited to these, we haven't been evaluating the performance of this legal group like we said we would. And I think that this amount of money should be discussed publicly, not put on a consent calendar. I think it should be more transparent. I think the public should know about it and be able to come and comment on, on how we're spending our legal fees since it is tax dollars. And...
As I say, and the public did just comment. And our evaluation's part of, um... I take it as in closed session, where we're making comments and we're learning. And this would be when we vote to approve or not approve would be part of that evaluation or feedback when our contract's coming up to the superintendent. And they do all of our, uh, public request acts. And when we're sued, we actually have to defend ourselves. That's our job. So...
I realize we have to defend ourselves when we are sued. But, um, I've asked this before when we can evaluate them. And I asked them before when, um, Board Member Vickers was president, and she said we should be doing it in January. Well, or she thought that's when the contracts came up. Well, I guess maybe it's a little bit different. But that this is the time that we need to go through a list and really evaluate them, not just approve this amount of money.
I think my overall comment was more inclusive of saying that you could ask the questions that you were asking basically privately. You could ask those questions when the contract came for approval, which is now. So you should have your questions now. And when we do the budget. Because the budgeting is when we actually put the, uh, the legal amounts in, into, into yearly budget. So that's another time when it's appropriate to ask. So if you have your questions now, um, we... You are part of everything that we've had. So you know the interactions that we have with this law firm and the various areas that they're consulted on.
I've also asked for details and not gotten them. Just a combination amount of how much is spent, not details on what's been spent on, in which areas.
You've asked for that also, but that was asked and answered. So if you're asking now for the total and...
No, I wasn't asking for the total. I was asking for what, what would spent in different areas. And I, I found it hard to do oversight if I don't know what's being spent in different areas.
Well, you know the areas that this firm covers because this is, this is not a special ed area. So...
I, I realize that.
And we also receive this information monthly in our warrants.
Turn. I'll turn my...
Quarterly track on our budget where we're at for each of these major categories. So we know that we are not over what we had anticipated at this point in time as far as our legal budget from last year.
I know how much we've spent. That's not what I'm looking at. I'm looking at what... And I know what areas they cover. I'm looking at who's requesting items to be done. I'm looking at...
That's a different issue.
This has gone up tremendously.
That's a different... So you know... You could answer Ms. Morgan's question then? Because you just said you know how much we've spent.
No, I said I understand we're getting a budget. And so we know how much is being spent and that we're not over our budget. I understand that. I don't understand specifically how the money's being spent. And I don't understand why we aren't evaluating them. I don't just think approving the money or not approving it is an evaluation. I mean, we went into detail on our, um, bylaw 9124. Why aren't we, why aren't we doing what we said we were gonna do? Why aren't we evaluating like we said we would?
But you can ask those questions any time. The superintendent can answer those, and you can come to determination. And when we come to vote, right now is where you bring up if you have an objection to those.
I have an objection to this law firm.
Right, then you would bring that up now.
I, I have an objection to them. I don't think they've served us... I don't... I think they've served us well recently. And I think we should be doing a formal evaluation of them, not just, uh, yeah, let's give them another $170,000. Taxpayer money.
But you're... But that's not what it is. Your questions, we are always asking the superintendent questions.
I was not given answers to the questions I asked.
Well, no, your questions have been... You don't like the answers you're getting to your questions because it's different from you're not getting answers to your questions.
I, I'm not getting answers specifically to how this money is being spent.
You keep getting a legal opinion, the legal information of what can be shared with you or any private citizen, anyone, as board member of privacy, and what can be shared and what can't be shared while things are current in litigation.
I asked, I said, it doesn't have to be anything that's in current litigation. I specified that. Leave that out.
The other stuff that they're working on is answering all the public request acts that we get. They do all of that work.
Well, I didn't get a number for that. How much has been spent on that? I don't know. Do you?
I don't know what the current number is on that.
I don't either.
I just know that it's a big expense now.
So you... So that's the whole expense?
I know what they're... I know, I know what they're... What we're paying them on an hourly rate, and we get the updates on it. Because we legally have to respond to those when people write them. So when someone writes and says they want us to sing songs or they want us to do things, we have to respond to all of those.
I'm not... I'm not debating that.
Naked in the hallways or whatever it is.
I'm not debating that.
Or stealing lunch money. We have to respond to all that.
I'm not debating any of that. I just want specifics on what we're spending it on. So how much is being spent on answering those questions? How much is being spent on other legal questions? Which I have heard that other districts look to each other and try to figure it out amongst themselves. They don't just call automatically for an answer and get a charge of, from the legal firm.
Orange County is one of the few counties that actually has a lawyer on staff. And so our staff does contact that attorney. There's not a fee to contacting that attorney. And then, no one employed here, unless I'm wrong, has a legal degree. Does anyone in our district have a legal degree? Okay. So lawyers answer legal questions. And it would be foolish to have someone who's not a lawyer answer a legal question. It costs us money. It puts us in danger. It creates liabilities when people who are not lawyers answer legal questions. They're not lawyers. And we don't have a lawyer on staff. Sometimes people contract with a lawyer, right? And that's your lawyer. That's what this law firm is for us. Sometimes you contract directly with them. Sometimes they hire a lawyer. We're not big enough to hire a lawyer. So we contract with a lawyer.
Som... There are many things you can look up yourself. You don't have to contact a lawyer for everything.
That's not our job. We hired an administrator to administrate that.
But if the administrator doesn't look things up, just calls legal and the... And it's...
Then during this time, you're saying you have a problem with this law firm. But if you have a problem with spending money illegally, then that's a time during budget. To talk about, that's not where you think that you should spend money.
It's both. It's both.
Well, yeah, no, but I mean, this one's about this personally. But spending money wouldn't be when we're talking about budget. That's when we talk about it. That's where our questions go about like, what are we spending money in? What else can we... How we cut that back? How can we audit that? How can we make sure? Right? That's when we ask those questions.
Right. And my, my problem is I don't get answers. I don't get specific answers. And I said, it doesn't have to do anything with litigation. I don't get specific answers about how money is being spent legal.
But there are litigators. So you... If the litigation's ongoing, then no one has a right to that. And there's law cited about it. I don't have law in front of me. But there's law that says you can't have that information.
That I can't have it anymore.
Right, and so you get that, and you say, but I didn't get any information. But you did. You just don't like what you got.
Carol, I said it doesn't have to do with any litig... Litigation concerning me. But how do I do oversight? How do I watch out for taxpayer money if, if I don't know what we're spending it on?
When we're in closed session, we are discussing litigation. That's where we discuss it. That is where you ask those questions. How many hours it's gonna take? We should drop this. We should move forward. That's what we're discussing. Those things are in closed session. That's how we monitor the budget, is by what we are giving advice to our lawyer.
But do you remember that the closed session agendas and our agendas, I'm not allowed to help? I mean, it would... You would have to put it on the agenda.
That's false. You haven't been excluded from any closed session agenda.
Uh, but you have, you have said for the agendas that you will not look at any of the little, uh, what did you call them? My little pet projects? Anything I bring up, whether it has merit or not, there's like an agreement. Nope, we're not putting anything on...
That is false, and that is not a closed session topic.
Right.
Excuse me.
Well, for open session.
That... This is a majority rules board. So we just... People bring... I think this is off the topic. So I think we have to stick to this topic because it's not agendized. So since... So should we just call for the vote? Yeah?
It's a difference... I guess it's a different approach in how you approach being a board member. Because I consider that I, I have fiscal oversight. I don't need the detail because... And you may, you may, you can disagree with this. I have confidence in our leadership team. And they are the ones that I would assume would... I, I trust that they would bring to us, and that would be a confidential issue, that they wanted to change law firms. That we, we do have multiple law firms that we work with for different specialized reasons. I don't feel that I... That's my decision to make. I trust that they bring me that information. But yes, I see the budget. I see the warrants. I see the amounts that are spent. At any time, I can ask that question to say, I'd like to bring this forward as a topic because this looks like this is a, a growing concern. So I need justification of why it's growing. Maybe if it's in a special ed issue, we have a lot more cases that have needed to be, to have legal advice. Because that is such a, a specialized area that needs to be done so carefully that they would, they would need that counsel. If it's something to do with, um, personnel issues or with student issues, again, those are confidential items, then the, the legal counsel that is the best suited to address that, or if they're construction issues. So yours, your approach, you want to do it differently. And that, for me, your approach is what I term as micromanaging. And I'm not... That's not... I don't think that...
So the, the...
Okay. Hold on just a second. Uh, I second to move the agenda to vote on it. And I agree with Jan's comments. So once you move the... Sorry, I have to get the rules. Once you move the agenda? Okay. So, um, we already have the motion on the floor. So all those in favor of approving this contract? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay. So it's, uh, four, zero, one? Okay. Motion approved? Okay?
We can ask for reports. Maybe we could have a consensus report to have the administration tell us how they do evaluate the contracts.
Okay, at the end? Okay. Okay, our next item is N as in Nancy. And this is an amendment to increase the contractor agreement with Ratan and Tucker by 50,000 to 100,000. A public comment on this item? And Sherry?
So, board policy 0100. The philosophy of the board. Number 15. Communication, trust, respect, collaboration, and teamwork strengthen the relationship among the board, the board members, and between board and superintendent. And contribute to the effectiveness of a governance team. The question that was on the table in the last item was, what are the numbers? It wasn't about, um, what the content of... Whether it was ask the questions now or not. It's a very simple, where is the taxpayer dollars going? And to take the question and spin it into something that is more about, well, you knew, you could ask, and we don't govern the same way, and so therefore it's your problem, is gaslighting the situation? And treating a board member with disrespect? Which actually, what you're not realizing is then reflecting on how you feel about your community that you represent. I've asked the question, what are you doing with my tax dollars? And you're not answering the question. So, right now, you're asking for another $50,000 for an attorney, which I saw last time in January. It was specifically listed for, for a case against the other board member. It's not listed here, but I know I saw it somewhere. So I'm really curious as to, as I said before, as a board, what are you doing to work with the staff and Dr. Valoria to reduce these costs? Because again, four years ago, we didn't have these costs. They weren't triple... They weren't double what they are now. So, I'm sure, and there were several people... You know, Jan was on the board? You were on the board? So how come now, all of a sudden, you're running to an attorney and asking all these questions? There wasn't this problem before. So how come suddenly we're doubling our fees? You are... Are you doing anything to work on mitigation? Or are you fighting everything with appeals and everything else? Are you not finding a way to either admit that you made a mistake? Are you trying to keep a record clean and not have a tarnished mark? Because perhaps there's something going forward? Your job is to represent our community and have oversight on the superintendent, not expect him to give you everything you need to know. That is not how it's supposed to go. People are asking you for information, and you're not giving it to them. And that's not acceptable. And you still approved and are gonna approve $220,000 tonight of taxpayer money, and you're proudly sitting there saying yes. But I asked how much you've spent thus far, and President Wolf couldn't tell me. You can't tell me. Mr. Kelly at least says, I've been tracking and I'm following along. But you two...
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on consent item number, a letter N as in Nancy? Nobody? Uh, a motion to approve the contract? So Carol and Jan? A discussion?
Our bylaw also states that we should avoid litigation when other remedies and solutions are possible. I'd like you to underst... Help me understand how we're doing that.
You're suing us.
But I've offered, I've offered other needs, I've offered mediation, which.
We, we did have. We had, we went to settlement.
No, we recommended a judge in mediation to look at both of our sides, save taxpayers a lot of money, save everybody a lot of money, and you never responded, which I guess is a no.
We had a meeting, you had a meeting with, with, at the time, President Vickers, you even asked who you wanted at that meeting.
No. That was not.
That was really expensive, by the way.
That was not with the lawyer that I have now, and that was not the mediation with an attorney that my lawyer suggested as a compromise.
Okay, this is not the topic, so we can't, we can't discuss, we can discuss this contract.
This does have to do with avoiding litigation.
I second to move the agenda.
Which we're not doing.
So.
Okay.
I have to wait for a minute for. Let's stay on the agendized item.
You ready?
Um, all those in favor? Aye. And then you, I believe.
Deas to abstain from the contract, because it's regarding her lawsuit. Okay, abstain.
Okay, four, zero, one passes. We've finished consent, do you want me to keep going, or wait while you've caught up? And we're going to number nine, our information items, and we're on the monthly financial update. And I believe this is Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Wolf. This is a monthly financial update for the report ending December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. You'll notice the revenues reflect the first of our two large property tax payments. Revenues are tracking as projected, we assumed the four and a half percent property tax growth over last year, and then based on that first installment, it's right about at that mark. Expenditures are also on pace for what you'd expect by the end of December. The only real change you'll notice in the expenditure listed on the top of the expenditure comparison top ten is that the transfers out is now the second, and that's historically occurs in December, because we do all the transfers in December. You'll see the, the typical two hundred and fifty thousand to Fund thirteen, which you've seen in all the past reports, but then you'll also see our transfers to Fund seventeen, and then the Capital Improvement Program and the Facility Repair Replacement Program have been added in there. Uh, next year, you're gonna see the updated CalPERS Trust Investment Report, and I find it interesting, it's been five years now since we established that trust, and to date, as of the end of December, it had earnings, investment earnings of slightly over seven hundred and fifty thousand, which you'll see on there. And then lastly, you'll follow up with all the balance sheet reports for all the other funds. Taking any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dixon on the financial report? My, my. Public comment on the financial report, apologies. Any public comment?
They're in the services and other outgoing, yes.
Any other questions, board members? Board Member Perry, did you have any? Okay, Carol? Board Member Norman? Thank you, Jeff. Okay, our next item is the presentation of the two thousand and twenty Facilities Master Plan Update. I think Mr. Zeta's coming up.
Yes, I'll just remind the board and bring it to you as an information item first. With the idea that we're gonna talk about what we accomplished in the plan to date, discuss proposed changes to the plan, and most importantly, though, if we get any feedback or questions from you now, we can adapt it to the plan, and we'll bring it forward for action at a later date. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Zeta.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm gonna give you an update on the two thousand and twenty Facilities Master Plan, for information and feedback. Well, just give you a quick overview, I can't get the slides to flip, but. The report, it's intended to serve as an update to the two thousand and nineteen Facilities Master Plan update. The report will review enrollment projections, also a summary of projects completed to date, as well as identify potential, a new project, and modifications based on the feedback we've received over the past year. Diving right into enrollment projections, this is a five-year enrollment projection by site and combined totals. Within the report, what we have up here is our five-year projection by totals, district-wide totals. The current year is two thousand and nineteen. You can see that the current enrollment is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two students. Looking at a projected enrollment for next year in two thousand and twenty at two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five students. I wanna point out that within the report, within this section here, there is the same information, but it does elaborate with the matrix and does break down by, by school site. The school site, it does have the next year's projection, two thousand and twenty in gray, and there is a similar chart that did list, and it does list the, the current year, two thousand and nineteen, in blue, and the next year, two thousand and twenty, in yellow. With the report that comes back to you, just to make it simpler for reading purposes, we're just gonna keep the, the next year, two thousand and twenty, in gray, in all the matrix, matrices, and also this combined enrollment chart. Looking at the chart, you can see that the, the enrollment is experiencing a stable and slight decline, looking to stabilize over, just over twenty-five hundred students. Two thousand and nineteen Project Update, we were able to complete all of the projects listed in the Master Plan Update, except for two projects that are currently in progress. We have the Top of the World HVAC Integrated Control System, that's in progress, and it's planned for installation this summer. We wanted to take a little more time to review those available systems out there and make sure that we put a system in place that works best for us and meets our needs. And then also has the Laguna Beach High School and District Office rekey projects, that's in progress, that, those door hardware hasn't been ordered. It turned out to be a, a big undertaking in the high school, it's many doors and many different types of hardware. We also included the district office here, our warehouse facility, and even the school power building in that, so. Should be done this spring at the latest summertime. For the two thousand and twenty Plan Update, this is based on the feedback we've received over this past year. Before I dive into it, I just wanted to point out, there's two corrections that have come up through some feedback already received. When you're looking at your report, on page eight, just to clarify, the top paragraph, the solar panels and the emergency power, power generators at all school sites, that is planned for installation summer of two thousand and twenty-six. And so I wanna be noted that, and note that it carries through this report, because it is mentioned there, it's also mentioned in the bullet points where it summarizes by site, and then also you'll find in the matrices, pages eleven through twenty. So, the, those two items are identified to be planned in the spring of two thousand and twenty-six, installed summer of two thousand and twenty-six. And we'll make that, that correction within the report that's brought back at a, at a later date. The other item is on page nine, Laguna Beach High School Summer, two thousand and twenty-three. I just wanna clarify, that bullet point pertains to the main quad modernizations, didn't actually list a, what the improvement was there. But I'll touch on that within this, this report. Looking at significant revisions to our Facilities Master Plan, at El Moro, we've identified the removal of the portable classroom and the repurpose of an existing space for music in summer of two thousand and twenty-three. After our Thurston project, that will be our last portable in the school district, and it would be fitting to look at removing that, that portable. At El Moro, we've added a photoelectric power generation system, which is the solar panels for summer of two thousand and twenty-six. We've also added permanent emergency power backup generators at all school sites, summer of two thousand and twenty-six. The, the district office was identified as two thousand and twenty-five, and that is correct, because we wanted to align that with our modernization project that we've also have planned here. It would make sense to do that at the same time period. And at Top of the World, we have added the replacement of interior finishes at the multipurpose room, and that would be summer of two thousand and twenty-three. We successfully replaced the finishes within the El Moro multipurpose room this last summer, and identified the Top of the World could use a similar type of refresh. Some ongoing discussions that are not specifically included within this update, I wanted to discuss. One was synthetic turf fields, we do, we have heard a request from different directions about the benefits of synthetic turf fields, so we wanted to discuss the replacement of the Laguna Beach High School baseball field, the El Moro field, and the Top of the World field in the out years with a synthetic turf, similar to what we have at the high school, we'll be installing at Thurston Middle School in the near future. These would be the remaining fields. Some of the benefits identified was the increased use of the fields. We're very limited on field space in Laguna, and being able to use those fields more efficiently would be a benefit. Also, it does provide better conditions and safer play. And some other items of discussion would be the upcoming capital improvement projects at the Laguna Beach High School Administration Office, and also the district office here. After we complete the Thurston Middle School project, we would, those would be our next CIP projects per the current plan. And specifically looking at the district office, we recently did get back our Okayak report, which does include our safety and security recommendations, so we're, we're diving into that right now. But for the district office, we'd like to come back at a later date, have a study session, a workshop-type environment, where we could really dive into the district office here, and talk about the functionality of the spaces, how we can increase safety and security, meet the needs of the community. There's just many facets to what could be done with this district office, and I think we would find benefit in having a study session on that at a later date. Okay, quick update on our next capital improvement project. It's been about a year and a half since we finished the Building One Hundred at the high school, and we're excited to get started at Thurston Middle School. We have completed the design for the project, this is the classroom modernization, and also the field modernization. We have our appointment with the State Architects Office later this month, on February twenty-seventh. We anticipate approval within approximately three to four months, so we're looking at a May, possibly a June, two thousand and twenty approval. We will go right out to bid. We are proposing breaking the project into two bid phases, a bid phase for the classroom modernization, and then a following, a separate bid phase for the field, just because the timing of both. And if, if we can break it into two phases, we, we feel we will get better bids, and that way, the bid for the field, the contractor would not be taking on that contract too early, with a year before the project would start, that would not be an ideal situation for a contractor out there. They wouldn't know a year out what their workload would be, and what costs would be for materials and labor and those sorts of things. So, that was the proposal for the bid, and if the bid and, the design, the bid go per plan, we would move right into construction within the classroom building, proposing approximately a twelve-month construction project. Once that classroom is completed, around June of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, we would be able to remove the two portables from the field and go right into that field project, which we've anticipated being approximately about six months, and that would complete that project around December of two thousand and twenty-one, just in time for softball to start up there and, and hand that field back over to the school. I know they'll be ready to have that field space back. Just some information on the, the funding component of this project. It is eligible to receive up to a million twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars in state funding due to the seismic retrofit component of the project. This is a quick schedule of the process to obtain those state funds. The first step is obtaining the DSA-approved plans, which I talked about, we should have by May or June. After that, we can then process our application with the Office of Public School Construction, OPSC, and we anticipate that taking a few months and being complete by August two thousand and twenty. With that, they will, OPSC will then place the, the approval, the application, they'll place the application onto the board meeting for the State Allocation Board, and at the, the next State Allocation Board meeting, they would vote on it, it would be approved, and then it would be placed on the unfunded list, and because of the seismic retrofit nature, it would be prioritized and go to the top. So basically, the next time the state of California sells bonds, another series, it would become funded, and we receive our funds. So we're, we're very pleased that we're able to pursue these funds, because this will be of great benefit to us, and help us with our future CIP projects. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
First, I wanna do, real quickly, Ryan, a public comment, any public comment on the Facilities Master Plan Update? None, okay. Any questions or comments for?
The superintendent's brought back some updates on the budget for the governor, and there is a number of things about buildings and whatnot, and I just wondered if any of those would affect us if they come to be. I was getting excited, but I know that we're probably not eligible for most of it.
Potentially, no, some of it's related to early education. So there was, last year in the budget, they set aside several hundred millions of dollars for kindergarten expansion, for those districts that hadn't gone to full-day kinder. There's quite a bit of money left over in that account that school districts had not lined up for. So there is the potential for us to, if we were to engage in preschool programming, that if we could use some dollars to maybe do some renovations to develop that. Other than that, there isn't a whole lot that would kind of filter down our way, we're always looking. You know, we actually had our, one of our, our firms that we work with kind of give us a better understanding of those dollars, in particular, the early childhood dollars. But our other concern with that is that, because they're not spent, do they reallocate them elsewhere? And so that will be known more at the May revision, and also at the May revision, and I think partly why they didn't make a lot of, kind of comments about facilities in the current budget is because there's a Proposition thirteen, not Prop thirteen, but proposition, yes, old, that people would think of, but that would be facilities bonds, that is the, the Prop thirteen, if that gets approved, that will also provide potential funding opportunities and increase that. So, again, I think the, the challenge at the state level is they didn't want to talk a lot about facilities in the budget and potential when they had that proposition on there.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Looking at page fifteen, on the amounts for this coming summer, and then the following two school years, so that's a total for the project, an estimate at this time of the, about four million, is that?
Yes, talking about the Thurston field and classroom. They total up to, I think, four point six million, is what we, we looked at. And it, we don't have the state funding identified on here, because it's not a guarantee.
So that would, that would be a deduction then from that, if we got that state funding?
Theoretically, yes, and also, also contingent on bids being received and.
I don't think I asked that correctly, but, so we're, we're projecting full funding ourselves?
Correct, to be conservative, and, but identifying the state funding, and we would hope to receive it, yes, it could consider, it could theoretically come off that, and then also contingent on bids received. We, we never exactly know where we are until we open those bids and find out the, the current market for construction costs.
And then on the, on the classroom and field project update on your presentation, the, we can accommodate the students that are currently in that classroom as we take that away and.
And we've actually already planned ahead, and that classroom was Sealan's classroom, Mr. Sealan, and they, we modernized F three last summer, and we moved Mr. Sealan up there, and so the, the building is actually vacant right now and ready to start.
Okay, and the same with the field, I mean, we just do with that, right? I mean, they just use the asphalt and, right, right?
Yep.
It just takes that long to get it done?
Yes.
And that is a turf replacement?
So we planned the start date of that, to start as soon as softball ends, and as soon as the school will allow us onto that field, and then we can utilize that summer months to get as much done as possible. And that's the heavy lifting, and hopefully it's in a great place, so when they come back to school, the work being done is not so much of an impact to the site operations. You know, the soil's been dealt with, and the grading's been done, and hopefully we're doing more things like putting up backstops and concrete, and putting the, the synthetic turf down over those next, you know, two months or so. But I will continue to update you on those schedules as we develop those with the bid docs and really tighten up that installation.
And I just had one last question, you asked, you suggested having a future study session for the District and High School Administration Building projects, but does that include more discussion on the future synthetic turf fields at other sites? Or is that, if not, I mean, I just would like a little more information, I don't know if you want me to ask now or at the end of the meeting? Because I don't, at the end of the meeting, or now? I don't feel I have as much knowledge as how that, how the synthetic turf field works with like a general playfield, like if it's at the elementary schools, because if I'm correct, Jeff, didn't we get turf that was, would reduce the heat? Wasn't that our last go-round with that?
Because it does not include the small black rubber pieces that attract the heat, so it was about twenty percent cooler than those, the older fields.
And I don't know, I just know it as being for actual, at high schools, for sports fields, or the middle school, and I, so I would just be, be interested in having more information about how it's happened, where people have used it on just a general playfield.
I think we could, we could include that in the study session, we could talk about all those proposed discussions, and it would be good to gather input and educate at the same time.
Thank you. Board Member Norman, any other comment?
So, also including with the climate crisis that we have, right, water is important to the turf, and Thurston's using turf in their main yard, in the yard where the kids sit and stuff like that, but playing on it, but also the. sit and stuff like that, but playing on it, but also the solar and the generators. Like, I know we're saying, yes, we're doing this, but I really would like to include that in just what does that look like and how are we going to utilize the sun's energy, right, to help? Okay, and I appreciate the fact that they're on here, but I get very excited to see it. And what your comments were on the turf going in Thurston, if it goes in during the summer and you're just doing those minor things, would that mean the students can use it during PE or that it still is going to be off limits until you're all done?
It'll still be fenced off and off limits, just by the nature of the construction process and separation of students with workers and those contracts that are held to a schedule that the contractors need to complete by, and we wouldn't want to give them any reason to have delays.
I agree. It's just when you said it, I thought, wait a minute, does that mean you still get to use it? Okay.
But we will really look at that schedule and make sure it's done as efficiently as possible, so we can get it turned back over to the school. And we thought six months was a conservative approach, but if we can bring it back, we will.
Okay, and then in the study session with the district and administrative offices, is it going to be a variety of options that you guys are going to provide? Is that what you're thinking now, or?
I think we want to talk, once we dig through the O-Kayak and really look at what the deficiencies are, and then we can get an idea of how programming this space would make us more efficient. The study session would be more designed to what do we want it to look like in terms of like a request for qualifications or request for proposal for design expert?
Okay.
Because I think it's, it would be a little too early this year to talk about or have those options prepared when we haven't solicited the feedback from the board yet.
Okay, and would that include also the, where we keep records and the bus barn and all of that? Does it include that, or I'm not sure if I...
It could, but it was mostly focusing here.
I would just like to see, just because it's such a part of, I know Victoria spends time down there getting stuff up, but it's such a part of where storage is, that maybe storage isn't there and that reworks, or we don't have a need to rework the bus barn. I don't know, I'm not trying to say that. I just don't, I just know that she's down there quite often and looking at that, how it ties in.
That is a great opportunity plot of land right there, so it would be worth looking at. So yeah, we can include that as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? No?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to item number 11. And this is the, sorry, glasses, the comprehensive district and school safety plan, and I have Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. We have, of course, Mr. Zeta here, if there's any questions related to the comprehensive safety plan, but if they're related to the specific schools, specific safety plans, we also have the principals here as well. I'm going to give a general overview, hopefully address any potential questions, but just so you know, we have additional staff to support this. There are some new additions to the safety plans. They were brought to the board as an information item back on January 16th. I believe the board's familiar with our district-wide safety plan. It's been presented over the past several years. We've just been adding and improving sections. The plan is very comprehensive. It goes beyond just natural disasters. It goes into medical emergencies, school discipline, emergency supplies, et cetera. The new additions are far more specific, robust safety plans for each site. Each site worked to identify specific current potential hazards based on their location and layout. The school-specific plans also identify the process for communication in the event of an emergency, their evacuation procedures, and the local safety dispersal zones. The safety plans are shared by the principals at the beginning of each year with their staff. Fire, earthquake, active shooter, and shelter in place with reunification drills are done every year throughout the year with the sites, so that's on top of these plans. The plans do include a log of those drills, so that we make sure we meet the requirements. Drills. Sorry, too much coffee. I think it's important to note that the safety plans are a living document, so that's why we update them at least annually. But as an example of updating beyond annually, you might recall that Jordan Vilwak, the city's emergency manager, has recently left and has been replaced. His contact information is still in the plans, so as soon as we get the new contact, we're going to update that sheet and send it out to all the sites. So we do ongoing updates. Since sharing the plan, I'm sorry, another great example is that as we're going through these O-Kayak recommendations and implementing them, it may mitigate a currently identified hazard that the site has come up with, but then again, we may also identify other hazards that we need to remedy. And so we're not just tying ourselves to the O-Kayak recommendations. We're trying to go above and beyond with the safety at all times, and I think, Ryan, and you heard the story of him meeting with the SROs and looking at the fencing and the perimeters of the sites, and it's an ongoing thing for us. It's not just based on one spot in time. Since sharing the plans on January 16th meeting, we have not received any questions or feedback from the community to report to you. And lastly, I just want to thank our principals, Ryan and Victoria, for all their work that they did on these plans, and I think that every year they improve, and I really appreciate all staff's support in developing them.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. A public comment on the school safety plans. I think Sheri, I have a card for you.
I've, thank you. I've been asking a few questions about this as well, and I think, and I think there's a little concern. I appreciate the guidance on the school safety plans and the updates on the ballistic film and the door locks. I understand that all of these schools have been outfitted with that at the administration level, as well as the administrative offices, and that all of the classrooms are slated for that starting in April. I find it curious as to why you started with the offices and not the classrooms where you're protecting the teachers and the students. I was told that they were assessed for the point of entry onto the campuses, but that wouldn't make sense, because the high school has the whole Street of Park Avenue all the way up. So I felt that that was lip service, that they would initiate the safety of the school with administrative offices, because it just seems like when you start adding one plus one plus one, you get the fact that it just doesn't look like the board is acting in a way that is student and community first. You have an amazing leadership within your schools that is doing what they're told from the top, and the top is the superintendent that's supposed to be governed by the board, and the board is supposed to be from the community so that they have oversight. So it doesn't matter if all of our teachers are from Timbuktu, because this district was founded on a lot of people that lived within the community, so it wasn't difficult to embrace ideas and thoughts that really truly spoke about our community, the arts, our schedule, when we started school, when we ended school, what was important in addition to being a phenomenal district academically. And, you know, we don't live in, you know, this isn't Irvine, and these ideas, there are so many great ideas out there that are being implemented, but there are so many out there that are being implemented that just don't fit. And then to go through and say, we're going to protect the administration first, everybody's important. I'm not devaluing one life over another or anything, but if you're trying to send a message that this administration is all about the students, because that was a comment that was made the first day of a calendar committee three years ago, it's all about the kids. It doesn't look like that, because ever since that statement was made by Dr. Valoria the first day of the calendar committee, I've been trying to pay attention, and I know a few of you heard that. I've been really watching. Is it really about the kids? Last night's school power on Saturday night, fundraisers for grants for...
Thank you, Sheri. Your time's up. Any other public comment on the safety plans? Okay, none. Any comments, questions? Oh, I need a motion, correct, right? First, thank you for, I'm hopping from information to action. Thank you. Motion?
So moved.
So Carol and Jan, and now discussion or questions?
I was just, I was going to ask about when we're deciding what, it's a living documents, our work is living and ongoing, so when we're deciding when we're doing things and the timing of it, who all is part of that decision and making that, and what are you using as guidelines around that? I know it's a broad question to try to...
Ryan, did you hear the question? It's a combination of Ryan with his site assessments, with the site administrators, the school resource officers, and then looking at the O-Kayak recommendations. Obviously, Orange County Intelligent Assessment Center. It's basically sheriffs, and it's ongoing. Obviously, if it's an emergency or a sudden need, we don't plan it, we just do it, but I don't know if you want to elaborate?
So is it about the, how do we determine?
The timing.
The timing of the...
Of the improvements.
The improvements. It's really a collaboration, working with our SROs, and also about impacts with the students and the classrooms. We have to, obviously, we want to get these improvements in place, but we have to do them in a way that doesn't impact the rooms and also fits with our, you know, our summer facility projects and routine maintenance. And so we've progressed through a majority of those recommendations, and that one specific item, it was a timing thing with the installation where we could get in the admins and do that without severely disrupting their operations. It still did impact, being the high school, I did get a phone call, a couple of phone calls, saying, why are we doing this? But we were able to put that in place. It's a small quantity, too, and it's a very expensive product, and we wanted to make sure we had the right product. We wanted to see how long it took to put in, and it took a long time to put those windows in place, and it's something we can never do during class time, because they're there all day, they come back a week later and do the caulking around the outside. And it was a way for us to meet the requirements of the report, which is exactly the intent, is funneling the visitors and to the main office, which you'll see the gates are all locked now at the high school. There's a lot of processes and procedures I've got in place, too. You can't just walk into the high school campus. You're kind of forced to the office. But putting some layers of security in there gives that staff that their eyes are open, they're looking forward, time to make a phone call and start that two-minute clock or less with the police showing up. So it was done with a collaboration with our SROs, and then just, then it's just a timing item there. And we're, we are in process of putting window film on, you know, classrooms that have been identified to be vulnerable, but that's going to be a longer installation, and as soon as we have windows, like spring break's coming up, we should be able to get some of that product in place then. But it's not just going to happen everywhere at once. It's probably going to happen in a sequence manner, but it should be done as soon as possible.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I still have concerns about the technology. I still hear from parents that they're worried about our classrooms and all of our overhead wires and how those are being used, and parents are concerned about 5G technology, and I think those are all health, what they look at as health concerns, health hazards that we should be looking at in terms of safety. We don't really know how safe they are, and people don't want their children used as experiments.
I'm not sure that falls under the safety plan. That's more of a health component. Jeff, do you have a comment?
I was just asked to clarify how that would look in a safety plan.
Well, classrooms could be looked at in terms of how much imaging is coming out of the ceiling to see if it's a safe level.
Mr. Dixon, didn't you answer this previously? The question about the quality, the air quality, that type of thing in the rooms? I mean, I think, I'm thinking that it was answered.
Mr. Morrison had a report, but I didn't, I, it was...
There was not, there was not, there was not a template for that, or there was not a comparison?
Well, no, there's, I think what we're talking about is the, kind of the radio waves that get pushed out through Wi-Fi connections and et cetera. The only guidelines that we can go off of are FCC guidelines and everything that we purchase is FCC compliant, so there are no other guidelines that we could hold ourselves to that, you know, that are available to us. So Mr. Morrison has, you know, spoken to a couple of different groups around that, and the response that we've received is, are you buying equipment that's in FCC guidelines? Yes, and that, so unless FCC changes their guidelines around that topic, we have no guidelines to go by other than what the federal government says to go by, so.
Thank you for repeating that. That's what I was remembering.
Anybody else with a question or comment?
I was going through these plans, and I, they, to me, they were, they were complex in the, almost to, especially the evacuation plans, almost a little bit overwhelming, and that's, that was why I directed that question about how they are shared with staff, and because they would, so they would automatically know all the things that were expected of them, where to go, what to do, and it's a lot, and I think if our, we're certainly well-prepared, and then just hope that we don't have to implement those. But I noticed also that you had addressed the, if I'm using the right word, the reunification plans, because that was identified a while back as something that we didn't have in place. So I think they're extremely thorough.
I do have a follow-up. Also, within them, as living documents, as studies come out around the trauma caused by the drills themselves and by all the excess police and security and all that that is being studied at UCLA and other places, would that be then incorporated, or does it have to come through the sheriffs to be incorporated within this official, I know there's other things we do, but like within this official safety plan, would, would that be addressed then there, or?
It could, I could see it could be, however, the safety plan itself really just addresses the number of drills and types that are required to do. I think that would be more of a consideration by the school site when they shape what their drills are going to look like. We would want to have those reports and know the potential impacts, but yeah, I think the safety plan's more of meeting the requirement for those drills.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll vote. Kalohe, your provisional vote?
Yes.
Board member vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries five, oh, did you oppose? No. Five, zero. Thank you. Okay. We're down to action items under 13, and we are at the Houghton Mifflin Harcourt 180 subscription package, and this is Dr. Winston.
Thank you. So you'll remember several years ago, we approved a pilot for REED 180 as a tier-three intervention for our special education and students who are working on a grade level significantly behind. It was very successful. We shared some data with you, supporting the use of that program, and so what we'd like to do now is pilot Math 180, which is a, also a tier-three intervention. We would train our special education teachers. They would receive coaching, and we would pilot that, and again, collect similar data to demonstrate whether or not it's successful with our students.
A few technological issues. Oh, there it goes. Sorry, their screen. Sorry, Dr. Winston, I'm getting myself organized here. Any public comment on the Math 180 subscription? None? Okay. Board questions? Any board questions? May I have a motion? I'm not sure who was first or second. I have to, okay, thanks. Okay, any discussion, board members?
Doing so well in math. I would suggest we continue going in this path by data.
Anyone else?
Thank you for bringing this. Thank you.
Okay, student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Okay, we're on to curriculum council recommendation for textbook adoption for next-generation science standards for middle school commencing with the 2020-2021 school year, and this is Dr. Winston.
Thank you. Our middle school team has been working diligently to develop curriculum aligned to NGSS, and over this last year, they've evaluated a number of different texts, and this year piloted them, and after consideration, they have selected the TCI Bring Science Alive textbook. And after consideration, they have selected the TCI Bring Science Alive textbooks, which are out on display out here. And if you look at, if you take a look through the textbook, you'll notice a difference compared to the textbooks that we reviewed or that we used as, as students. That was a comment among all of the Curriculum Council members, including parents, just how different it looked and how engaging the materials were. And the teachers look forward to using them as, you know, they incorporate it into their NGSS and their lessons.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, none? Any board questions?
Little bit over my head.
Do we put the books, are they only available here or are they at school sites as well?
I believe they're at the school site as well. And then we also, I think, brought copies, we brought copies to Curriculum Council, PTA Council. Yeah, we've been doing a lot of outreach just because it's such a big change, you know, to help families understand kind of the change in science. But Thurston's been using an integrated approach now for a couple of years, and this, these textbooks will just help reinforce that. Thank you.
Sorry, I had a question, and of course, this isn't working, so I don't have all my things with me. When you looked at it all, I remember like the Thurston science teachers were involved, counselors were involved, et cetera. But it didn't say the high school science teachers.
They've been doing some cross-articulation over this year, especially now, as you'll see later on, as the high school approaches an integrated approach. So they have done some sharing. In terms of the textbooks, we're not anticipating textbooks for the high school course. I think it's been a really helpful model to have them build the framework and really understand it and use the text as a support rather than just rely on the textbook to teach everything.
Right. I just was thinking it would be helpful to have one of them also because we are doing all this articulation.
Yes, and we are working to do that more so now.
Okay, thanks.
Another comment is both high school and Thurston. It's really making the classrooms, the experience more relevant.
Before you have a comment, I need a motion. Sorry. I was under questions. Okay.
That's right, because I was coming.
A second? Okay, Carol and Jan? Free to comment.
Thank you to all of the teachers, all the science teachers that are making their classes very relevant to the students.
Any other comments? Student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Our next item is Memorandum of Understanding, an MOU between Laguna Beach Unified School District and Capistrano Unified School District for the 2020-21, excuse me, school years to establish a consortium to participate in the strengthening career and technical education for the 21st Century Act called the Perkins. And Dr. Winston.
Thank you. So we've been part of this consortium with Saddleback Valley since 2008. This would allow us to align with CCA. So our consortium will change, and I think we will actually see a bit more funding as a result of that. And it makes sense since our CTE programs are aligned with CCA, and we have some overlap there, that this would be a good move for us.
Thank you. Any public comment on this MOU? I see none? Okay. Any board questions?
Is there any downside?
Not that I'm aware.
May I have a motion? Jim and Jan? Any discussion or any more questions for Dr. Winston? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I mean, it was in our backup here, so it's really just redundant. Everybody read it, but it has, we've been doing this for a long time. It's not new. Eleven years, eleven years, ten, eleven years?
I think it seems like it's better to be connected to the CCA program. It just seems like we're putting more energy to where there's more action for students, more opportunities. So thank you for switching it over from that. Okay. Student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board member vote, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five, zero. Okay, our next item is Purchase Agreement with Solution Tree to Provide On-Site Professional Development for District Staff on March 13th, 2020 in an amount not to exceed $6,500. Dr. Winston.
Thank you. This may look familiar because we had brought a similar contract to you several months ago. As we prepare for our March 13th Professional Learning Day with our staff, we want to bring in the same trainer that we utilize on the January 6th day so that we have that continuity. And as we do the work related to our common formative assessments and establishing our essential learning targets, it's helpful to have somebody who, we don't have to start all over with every time. So we want to continue that work, and we want to have his coaching and support. So this is for the same presenter that we had back in January.
Thank you. Public comment on the Solution Tree contract? None? Okay. Board questions for Dr. Winston? Anyone? A motion to approve? You guys are silent over there. Jan and Jim? We're getting punchy. Any discussion amongst board members? No? I want to say that I'm grateful that it's a continuation of the same person who then will understand who they're teaching, where they came from. It's a wiser investment of our funds that we have that continuity. I think it's really worthwhile for staff. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, I will go to student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And call for board member vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes five, zero. Okay, our next item is Orton-Gillingham Intermediate On-Site District Training by Institute for Multi-Sensory Education. Dr. Winston.
Thank you. This is a continuation of our work as part of the Dyslexia Work Group. And you'll remember about 18 months ago, we trained all of our K-1 teachers and our specialists in Orton-Gillingham methods. And we're actually looking at doing a refresher training as well for those folks that is of shorter duration, isn't quite to the extent of this contract. But this contract would allow us to provide a summer training, so we're not pulling teachers out of the classroom, for third through 12th grade teachers as well as our specialists. And it's really the next level in focusing on decoding and encoding, higher-level spelling rules, you know, the roots and the prefixes and suffixes and all of those things. So we did kind of an all-call just to see how many people that we have interested in just a week or so, and we have 20 that have indicated. So we think we can fill it. If we can't, we decided we could offer spots to other districts and invoice them for the cost. So this is a not-to-exceed cost, assuming that it's for all of our staff, but we do have the option to open it up as well.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? No? Okay. Any board questions?
As summer professional development, the teachers were paid to attend as well?
That's correct.
Any other questions? May I have a motion, please? Jan and Carol? Any discussion, board members?
Thank you so much for extending this and opening it up. Get really, allowing teachers ways to reach all students and helping the brain to read just on one side is remarkable.
I should also comment that it's also open to our classified staff who are working with our students in, in the classroom environment. It's really important because they're often working with small groups of kids who struggle, and having those strategies is very helpful.
That's perfect and explains why Margaret keeps nodding her head yes. She's a good user. Yes. Thank you.
That is an important component because it provides that continuity and consistency once we find some methods that work and that help the students to have all those who work with the students be able to, to use the same methods. Thank you.
Okay, student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board member vote, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five, zero. We're now to the next one, which is the 2019-2020 School Plan for the Student Achievement SIPSA for each Laguna Beach Unified School District school. Dr. Winston.
Thank you. You're almost done with me. So these are our required SIPSA's that we bring to you each year. They are aligned to the district's LCAP and those eight state priorities that you see frequently. And so at each school site, the school site council is responsible for developing and reviewing and approving these plans, and so we are presenting them to you tonight for approval.
Any public comment on the school plan for student achievement documents? No? Any board questions for Dr. Winston?
I should point out that Dr. Mayberry did the bulk of the work on this with the principals, so.
Wow.
Sorry, may I have a motion?
Second.
Jan and Jim? Any other discussion, comments, any board members would like to have?
I'd just like to observe that they're, again, they're very thorough documents with a lot of information, and it reflects a lot of work done by those at the school sites. But I also tied in with that, and it was something you were referencing earlier with the science, but to hear that Chad and Alonda Hartford were up at Thurston PTA talking about the integrated science that's going to start at the high school next year. And so I think that we're making efforts to get that information out on the curricular changes and that it's, it's good information that it's hard to make changes. And I think the only, they, they really did a good snapshot, a good capsule of it, and very informative to the parents who have students entering ninth grade. And that's just one, one component of what we do on these school site plans. But it's, it's not, it's not a secret. I mean, it's out there, and lots of people work on it. Thank you.
Yeah, to that point, I think there's a lot of people that the principals rely on to get this done, a lot of staff that go above and beyond and really help out, especially, you know, at, this year, we had a little bit of a gap at top of the world. And I know the teachers there really stepped up and filled that void and helped develop a really comprehensive plan. So we're really appreciative of all that. And as you can see, there's a lot of data in there and a lot of things going on. So just, it's one of those things that we know we continue to have to do for the state requires it, along with the LCAP, but we're trying to find ways to make it really marry well with the work that's going on.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay, student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Call for board member vote, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes five, zero. Our final item for, I think, Dr. Winston, is Course of Study for the Laguna Beach Unified School District Secondary Schools for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you, President Wolf. The entire course of study is attached in this document, but I want to point out the two new additions that were vetted by the Curriculum Council and approved to move forward to the board. The first is AP Chinese Language and Culture, which would allow for an AP course for students who elect to take the Mandarin pathway, similar to our other options that we have. We have lots of AP options at the, for Spanish and for French, so we want to make it equitable for students. So that was the first course. The second course is Integrated Science One. As I talked about, Member Perry, when you mentioned the articulation, we, that's, we've really invested a lot of time in doing that here to make sure that the middle school teachers are on board, middle school counselors, you know, going through PTA. We did the study session last fall where we had them demonstrate a lesson of how it's changed and really how all of those different areas of science are now integrated. By approving this course, we're moving toward a pathway that will include all of the NGSS standards. Right now, we're not quite hitting those Earth and Space Science standards the way that we should be. And so we want to, you know, create a pathway for students that allows them to access all of the standards and still take those electives that they want to take in science as they move through their high school year. So we're not eliminating any other courses for ninth graders next year other than biology, that this will be an integrated approach. It will be primarily physical science, but will also incorporate standards from the other areas as well. So those are the two new courses that we're proposing in this course of study.
Any public comment on the course of study presented? Now, board questions?
So you're saying that, not that a freshman can take ACR or something like that, but those science classes are going to remain? And then the idea, as it integrates, those top classes will still remain?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All the AP options and anatomy and physiology, all of those courses will still remain.
Any other questions?
Is this just a course for the freshmen? And then, I think you already said this, but is this what the science teachers presented on, like? Okay.
Yes. Yes and yes. So the remaining courses that 10th through 12th graders take will remain for those grade levels. This is just starting new with freshmen.
A motion, please? Jan and Jim? And any discussion?
I think after I heard the presentation at Thurston PTA, and I thought back to that study session we had, when we were doing the experiments in the lab, and it seems, it just seems to make so much more sense as far as the integrated approach to science, as far as the, what the students will be learning and how it all connects. And that really, I can, I, it made a lot more sense to me, the purpose coming actually from the state to take that direction as opposed to students having a real gap in their science knowledge. And it's, so I'm glad that, it's been a long time. I don't think that there was, you know, PTA people didn't even hear, but I mean, it was a lot of work from our high school folks to, to get to that point because they had so many years of just being siloed. And so it's, you know, they're finally there, and it's, we'll see how it goes. But coming out of Thurston, the students will be ready for it. Thank you.
I also am grateful to the science teachers for all of the effort in this shift. It's a, it's a big shift. But you could see, we could all see at the study session, how excited they were about the shift.
And a general, general, besides, there's a lot of courses. And I, I think it's, I think it's really commendable that we're able to offer so many course selections with a small school. It's not easy to do. And I, I mean, I've heard other people say different things, and I can think of things that maybe we used to have, we don't have anymore, but you can't do everything. And, but we, there is a lot here. And I think mostly what's probably problematic for our students is they don't have enough time. Thank you.
I have one other comment. Sorry. Yeah, of course. Is that, is that in keeping them relevant? Like looking at how it's changed just since we've been on the board and then since you guys have been on the board? Like, they've become more and more relevant, and teachers have reworked their classes or gone for their certifications, I think, gone for their certification to, to make it relevant so that you guys, you know, want to vote with your feet and, and take their class. It's amazing.
Okay. No, you're good. Student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Board member vote, all in favor? Aye. Fi, oh, opposed? Five, zero passes. Okay, we're under technology. Given Mr. Morrison a fair, this is in Structure, Canvas, Web-Based Learning Management. Mr. Morrison?
Yes. President Wolf, members of the board, thank you for considering this item. We, once Haiku got purchased by Power School Learning, we had some concerns about the product. Some things were not being delivered, like parent access and ARI's integration, because they have their own student information system. So we set out to look at different systems. And it's been about a year in that process of kind of looking, and we had teacher input. We've looked at key factors like integration with ARI's, but support and sustainability. And we've reached out to our colleagues in the, in the county and found out that Canvas was one of the top ones. And we've chosen that as the out-learning management system moving forward. It is the, the number one system in colleges right now, just surpassed Blackboard. And they have about 30 million people using it. So it's very stable, very, we think it's a good system. And we have teachers at the high school using it right now in some of the classes, and it's going pretty well. And we're going to, if this is approved today, we'll be starting our, our implementation process tomorrow, actually, and looking at like what the schedule might be like exactly with the high school and middle. At elementary school, the, we looked at Google Classroom. We looked at a variety of solutions, but Google Classroom seems to be standing out as something that is really good and working. And it's a little bit more simple than, than Canvas for, for lower elementary and upper. And so we think that it'll be a good transition from Classroom to Canvas in middle. And we do have, we, the districts in, in the county that I spoke with are Huntington Beach Union High School District. They've been using Canvas for a long time. OCDE has moved to Canvas. Irvine has moved to Canvas. Off of, all of these districts move off of Haiku and Delago Academy down in San Diego. So those are my references. And if there's any questions? So those are my references, and if there's any questions?
First, I'm going to do public comment. Is there any public comment on the Canvas web-based learning management? None? Okay, board questions?
So, can students take their accumulated work from Canvas at the end and take it with them? Or move it to the university they're going to?
The way it works is there's two products. There's one product you approved in December called Portfolio. And it integrates with Canvas. Canvas actually purchased Portfolio about two years ago, or a year and a half ago. And so Portfolio would be something that they have a lifetime's membership to, once they're in. And they can take their portfolio with them, but we would have to set what to build in there. So it would be key milestones of student work. And we're going to be talking to, you know, like the Flow program might be a candidate for that.
Okay.
That is, that's proposed at the high school. And so there are key things that we could look at that would be, not just student work for, but like soft skills, like project management or growth mindset. It can track that as well.
Oh, that's wonderful. And so will Google Classroom be able to then tie into that as well? Or would that, or is Portfolio sit on top of Google Classroom?
Portfolio could sit as a standalone for, by itself at the elementary level, but it wouldn't be integrated with Classroom.
Okay.
But the, yes, that would probably be the way it would work there. But Google Classroom does integrate with Ares, so that's a good thing.
Any other questions?
I don't know. I do not know. If they...
Let me get a motion, and then we can discuss. Okay. Carol and Jan. Okay, any discussion or comments or anything for Mr. Morrison?
How, the teachers that are using it now, I'm assuming you've gotten good feedback. But how will this change for them? Like, how does it make it better for them, what they currently have?
So there's a few key features that are better in that, this is a little hard to describe, but it can be an individualized learning plan. So as they start to look at a certain student and they're answering certain questions a certain way, they can put them on a path where there might be a video or something else integrated with that. So you can build plans based on the individual needs of certain students, which is powerful, but would take a lot of work. That's more of a future-looking part of it. So that's something that it has. It also has video assessments, which we don't currently have. We have with EdPuzzle, but we don't currently have that with the LMS. And that would be like, you watch a segment of video and you might answer a few questions about it. And that's integrated with a product called Studio. The other thing this has is a catalog. So if we do offer classes that are for the district or for students that are outside of the schedule, that are small classes, it's a place where they could sign up. So it has a registration system built in. So there are some really nice key things that make it better for the future of our district.
Well, we do rely upon you for the future of the campus.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, Dr. Kelly, it seems as though the state system is piloting Canvas. Fall of 2019 is my understanding that they've started their pilot. So they claim that Canvas has risen to the top as the front runner, and they're making a transition. And Canvas has been, it's a pretty intuitive program. So we're very lucky and great work from staff and from Mike's team as well.
I was very lucky to be on the beginning team at LA, to be on the ending team at Hayward. And I had to give the same speech that this is really going to revolutionize the world for you all.
Thanks, Mike, for all your work on this and for vetting things for the teachers because that's where it's experienced all the time. And we want to make sure we engage them and get their strong opinions. Thank you for that. Student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Board member vote. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Our next item is number 15, Board Policies and Bylaws. Second read and approval. Hold on, I got to open it. Should I list the policies? I'll just list the numbers. Policy number 1312.1, policy number 3540, policy 5131.2, 5142, 6142.1, 6142.2, 6163.1, 6174, 6179, 9270, 9320, 9321, and 9322. And board members will note that all the notes on our past work is on the document in our item. Dr. Valoria?
We have brought these forward. Again, we've had lots of discussion about these over the last several months. We had a workshop. It's been quite a few months now because it was first presented in November, where we worked with council, made some edits, brought them back for first read. And then, so they're here for your approval for tonight.
Any public comment on the board policies and bylaws that I listed? Any board questions?
About any of them?
Should I have a motion first before we, or no? How would I do it? Okay, so any questions? Yes? First, okay, simple questions first, getting directed.
Did we ever find out how many? Now, I don't have all my stuff here. Apologize, Jeff, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Dixon. But was it 267 students, you said, come from the canyon and El Toro Road? I don't remember.
I don't remember the exact number.
Yeah, I don't either. Did we ever find out how many of those don't have transportation or have trouble with transportation? Or how they get to school?
I did not do any survey on that.
I think in our discussion, that wasn't part of the policy. That was more...
This question can lead into discussion, which is not...
Oh. Okay, so I need a motion? Yeah, because we're discussing, sorry, I want to make sure.
Since these came, I'll recommend it for a second read. Are you asking for motion on all?
Yes.
Okay. So move.
Okay, so that's Jan and Jim. And now a discussion.
Referencing that that was just brought up, what I believe is that we gave direction that the question would be asked at the high school if there was a concern or if there... So I'm assuming we haven't heard back that there is a major issue.
Right. So we asked Terry, who obviously sells bus passes, if she had received a call about transportation of high school students on our buses. And prior to her retiring, her response was, in her time here, she'd never received a request. Dr. Allman has not expressed that he's had any issues where students have stated they are unable to get to school.
Site administrators all do have pots of money that they could assist in this area if they needed to.
Correct.
Bus passes.
Correct, correct.
I'm still concerned. I think that's one of our big responsibilities to students, to make sure that they can get to school safely and efficiently. And I know of two students who, not recently, but lived out there and dropped out of school. Transportation was an issue. They also needed, they also helped to take care of their families by getting jobs. Since then, I, you know, I don't know all of the details, but I did talk to some students about it. And they said it would really be beneficial to those who live out in the canyon and on El Toro Road because those parents struggle taking their kids to school or sometimes have to take them very early because of their work. And students stay on school grounds early without any supervision. Another thing the student mentioned was many of those are Hispanic students. And they, some do take public transportation. So they have to take it at the time it comes and then walk from the bus station, which isn't that bad. And it takes a lot of time out of their mornings. They lose sleep. They could be relaxing their brains and be ready for school. Another student said from there that they would like to be on a sports team, but the transportation part is just too difficult. I think we meet, I, I'm sorry that we don't have more exact figures about how many students this would benefit. Like I said, other districts have this as part of their transportation policy. We don't, you know, kids living five miles away without a way to get to school, and you have one parent that goes to work in another direction. Our freshmen and sophomores don't drive. I...
I would...
I would caution, we have not done any kind of review of costs associated with this. If you look at the policy as it stands, it's the, you know, we will recommend to the board the most economical and appropriate means of providing transportation to our students. We, there are a lot of logistical things that we would have to determine and figure out. And that's, we are in the process of doing that to determine, you know, what is the feasibility? What are the costs? However, we may not even have a bus yard that would meet the needs of that and would require all sorts of additional challenges that we would face. So we are in the process of examining because that is my role as superintendent of board policy. But I would be hesitant to add language into a policy tonight that would dictate that we're going to do something when we'd have no idea of the costs associated or whether we would actually be able to service the buses.
Can we actually figure out how many students would benefit from this? Students in South Laguna have also mentioned it because they're over four miles away, and there's no sidewalks for them to get to school.
I can make an observation that the students that you speak to or the students that have contacted you or the parents, they need to then go to the school office and register that same concern. Because if they don't, they won't know about it. So that would be, that observation is that they need to take that information in. If we're asking the site administration to give us that information, they need to receive it.
I would agree with that. I think it needs to go to the site so the site has an understanding because they are the administrators to understand the feasibility of such a plan.
I know over the years, some of the reasons that we had inter-district transfers from folks in Liso Vallejo because the schools were closer or the schools, the elementary schools had YMCA childcare on the campus. We've had a lot of those over the years. So I'm not saying that that's a solution, but there is, you know, if it is such a problem for a family and we don't, at this point, provide transportation, they can make a choice to have their children in school. They don't need to leave school.
Well, that has happened. And why can't we ask the students how many students this would benefit? I mean, why are you so, why are we opposed to that?
Not opposed to that, but we're asking the site to do it. Sorry. So we're going to move the agenda on. And we already know that Dr. Valoria and staff are doing a feasibility study, which I think will address the issues. And then the follow-up is that the students you've talked to, Dee, that have an issue, please have them go to the administration at their school site where they do not have transportation, so they can gather that information. And they're the most connected to the students at the site. Okay? Oh, yeah. Student board rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Wait, is this on all of them?
Yes.
Oh, I've got more. I've got more on other ones.
Oh, okay.
So...
He moved the question, so we have to vote on all of them as a group?
Well...
That's actually how that works.
Because this is our second read, and we had other, you'll see on the chart, it says our discussion points and the details that we went over at previous meetings and who voted for which.
Well, we also were ready to do this last time, and this was switched. I think we should, I think we should hear about some of the, at least one other item.
Well, I think we already have a move on to vote on it. And we switched it last time because Carol had a personal emergency, so I think that was a unique case. But we already have moved and have a second on it to move forward on the vote. Chloe, I did your...
Well, is there another time when I can comment on...
Robert's rule of order, which we abide by. When Jim, when Jim used the move of the question? That's what's calling, he knows those better than I do. Then that, we are not even supposed to be doing this. It stops the discussion, you have to move forward and vote. That's what it does. It moves all of it. I went through it, read them, because the first time he did it was with me. I went, what is that? Yeah. And you have to have a second on it. You have to vote on it.
Oh, vote on the moving forward. Do you have to vote on it? Or there's a second? Okay, so on the moving forward, and I seconded Jim's. So all those in favor? Aye. Of moving, right?
Right. A member Kelly's motion. You want to talk about one other thing?
Mm-hmm.
So then does it fail, so the majority is saying no?
I want to make sure that's all right with Victoria. Is that suitable? Okay. Okay?
Okay, I would like to talk about BB 9322, the agenda meeting materials. And as part of that, I know when the Aspen group came and spoke with us, they talked about benefits of rotating members setting the agenda. And I think Board Member Normandin has been helping with that. And I know, obviously, Board Member Vickers did that a lot. And now Board Member Wolf. And I think it would help if we could rotate that. And I talked to some other districts when I was at CSBA, and many districts do that. They rotate the setting of the agenda.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
As I recall, the concept that we had, we don't do it that way. And we also don't, that was a thing we couldn't seem to clear up, is that the board member is not setting the agenda. Board member's reviewing the agenda.
And they're also helping decide how they think should be on the agenda? So it's about the right amount of time?
No. And that's why we incorporated this last agenda item, so that a board member brings forward something they would like to see on the agenda. And if there's consensus, it moves forward, but with the determination of where it fits by the administrative team. So I, what you're referring to, I thought we had settled that.
We didn't. I mean, why did the Aspen group want us to rotate it? Why do other districts...
Well, we brought them in for advice.
No, I know. But that was one of their suggestions.
Well, but we didn't hire them, and it's a whole package. That's why we didn't hire them. It's $50,000 for the whole package. It wasn't a piecemeal thing. That was the issue that the unions and the community had shared with us that bothered them.
Right, but one of their suggestions that people liked was rotating.
Well, they made many suggestions that we liked. Many, many suggestions.
Well, we don't have to hire them to rotate.
Yeah, but I don't know where you're saying the rotation goes, is what I'm looking to see.
I'm looking at rotating.
If the majority didn't take to that specific suggestion, we chose to stay with what we have in place, with the addition of that last agenda item.
So when did it start that Board Member Normandin is part of that discussion? Is that in here?
It was with the clerk.
The clerk.
It was adding the clerk to it. Because the Aspen group suggestion was not accepted by the majority. So then it was like, well, with a clerk.
And so it didn't work when I was the clerk for two years, but now it does work.
It wasn't suggested. This is my second year as a clerk, but it wasn't suggested when you were the clerk. It wasn't, we didn't have Aspen group here.
Okay, what do I do for call for the question? The motion? Thanks, you guys. I feel like I have to have coaches here to the right. Okay. I already did the student board rep vote, didn't I? I feel like I'm a little behind on that. Okay, so board member vote on the group of...
No, the call for the question.
Call for the question vote. Okay. Okay, call for the question vote. Board members, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so Carrie's four zero one. I'm starting to lose my... Okay. Okay, so, right now, we are, we already had a motion for all the bylaws. Now, I'm voting, we're voting on all the bylaws being passed as a group. Board... No, I think it's fine as it is, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppo, oh, Chloe, did I do?
Now she is.
Okay. Chloe provisional vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, back to board members, apologies. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so, four one, it passes the board member, the bylaws and policies. Sure. There were five oh votes on all of these to move them forward for second reading, except two. So, now, with this second reading, we have a member Perry vote no on all of them, and I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Because I'm not allowed to vote no on individual ones. I could vote three of them by one.
Then you needed to ask, then you needed to ask to pull those. It's too late now, it's, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, our final is board member requests. Board member requests for information and suggestions for items for future meetings. Board Member Vickers.
I would just like to ask that if you could just sum up, there's been a number of requests already made throughout this meeting for information, so whatever you guys have in your notes, if you could sum up for us what those are.
About, pardon me?
Well, there've been a number of requests along the way tonight for more information, so I just...
So, this is the time for us to summarize them for...
No, I'm not going to summarize.
For the staff.
Okay, then you...
I would like to have a report at some time in the future regarding our contracts and how long, like, are's the CPA for, and how do we evaluate that? The same thing with the lawyers. I think that would just be something that would be helpful for everyone to know what our processes are, because I know we have them. I just can't remember them individually off the top of my head. I've talked with you about the CPA firm in particular.
Anything else?
That was mine.
Can you turn off your mic? Thank you, sir. Board Member Perry?
I just wanted to give a rat, shout out to Mr. Zadeh. He went, I pulled him in. He was doing something great, getting us a great deal on carpeting that wasn't installed right, and making him come back and do it right, which I appreciated. But I called him in to look at the presentations being given on national monuments, and he kindly came and listened to some. They were, they were fabulous. And it was really interesting how international that specific class is. And I got to meet parents from Taiwan, China, India, Pakistan, across the world. And then, my question, and maybe President Wolf can help me with this. I, I know everybody receives all kinds of requests for nominating teachers, girls. Is there, do we each just do our own? If they're not asking in the school, are they asking us as community members who we think would be good nominees? Or do we just turn it over to the schools?
I think we have to be careful this isn't a discussion, so let's just ask for information from the administration.
So, is there a time we could talk about...
They'll report in the weekly update. How about that? Just...
And it's not just that.
Didn't you want them to do something?
We can't, we can't have a discussion, though, right now. These aren't agenda, agendas.
No, but she was asking for the future as far as, and we were trying to summarize for the staff which things we had asked for.
Oh, okay.
And I, and you, you had asked for the information on the lawsuits as far as what, what you, was that one of the things that you did?
Right. That was one of the things that I...
As far as what we were allowed to, to do. Wasn't there a second thing that you asked?
The second thing was, I wanted to know how many students would benefit from transportation.
Transportation. And then, these are consensus things, which you have to decide if there's an interest for that, for the agenda.
Or for information I don't know.
Right, right.
Anything else, Dee?
No.
And can you please turn off your mic? Thank you. Board Member Normanin?
One, thank you for last time, and I know we, I didn't realize it's been since November with the board policies that we've waited. Thank you, guys, for waiting until I could be back. The thing I'd asked for was, in the plan, the facility master plan, that we include the bus barn as well in that. And then, it was that we, for when we had a stay session, and the solar panels, generator, and you'd asked about the turf, and so, all of that together in what you're doing. And I think you're already planning on the various options to look at for the site and administrative office. I think that was what you had said, but is that the complete summary? Okay.
Thank you. My only, I just want to do a reminder to all board members that all requests in the district do go through the superintendent, and this is per our board bylaw 9200, and this is a quote from the bylaw. Unless agreed to by the board as a whole, individual members of the board shall not exercise any administrative responsibility with, with respect to the schools or command the services of any school employee. Individual board members shall submit requests for information to the superintendent. This means all requests, not, it doesn't matter which department or school site you're visiting, it does need to go through the superintendent, so I would hope we'd all respect board bylaw 9200. I have nothing else.
Can I ask a question about that? No.
I can't have a discussion? I just, I read directly from board bylaw 9200.
Yeah, but it, it doesn't address when you are invited. You're not asking a question, you're just invited to come by different students, parents, teachers.
Yeah, we can't discuss it.
Self as a board member? Being invited somewhere?
I think we have to be careful about discussion.
So, I'm asking a question.
But we can't discuss it, so maybe Dr. Valoria could answer it in a weekly update?
No, but I'm just asking, she's asking about herself.
Yeah, okay. Our next regular meeting is Wednesday, March 11th, and a motion to adjourn. Carol and Jan? Okay, sorry. Student Board Rep provisional vote?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.